She has the, you know, reasons that align with state law for them to be able to participate.
I did not hear from anyone else on the committee that was not going to be here.
It must be passed of rules and excellent, that will be helpful because then they'll have to.
Anything more from anybody this evening? Barbara's here. Hello Barbara.
That's very frustrating Jim Bumble, the way he's always allowing himself to do it. And I'm being controlled, I just want to can't do that.
But Jim needs to do all the, not yet, all the time.
Yeah, I don't, why you?
I may already ask Barbara, who never asked.
This is, this was in, in this packet, by seeing my, by this key.
Yep. Alright.
Sitting here.
Oh yeah, and Mike, who finally got this key to the minority leaders.
Correct.
Well, that is. But it would be nice, because then I could be sit on, having all this meeting, it would be nice if I could, you know, hold out.
I don't know much longer, you, 6:30 minutes, so, screw it, five minutes.
Thank you for your vision, sure.
Yes, thank you.
Who's there in person?
We only have Tony, so we're still waiting for Naima and Randy, otherwise we won't be able to do this meeting.
Oh dear.
Hopefully Michelle, since Michelle's requested, and the chief wants to fire her, maybe come in.
Alright. She's not on. Is Barbara home? Is she helping you out? She was at her.
Maybe it's vouchers, you don't have to call people, come in.
I can tell you that.
You can sign it?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm like, told you I don't have what's special, but I wouldn't know how to do something. Is that service allowed too?
The door is unlocked downstairs, check.
Yeah, I don't want to.
I'm simply committed, there's no shot here, door. Michelle's in.
Michelle's up here.
But you need the two people in person, right, you know you have this.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
Sounds like.
Ready? Sounds like her.
You want me to? I don't, but I'm.
Do you want me to talk to Naima?
Yes, please, just to see if she's coming to our board on a caucus meeting.
Good evening.
How are you?
And who are you?
I'm good.
Um, Dan Baker is in the building, if we need. Good, how are you?
Wish I'd known, wish I'd known about your relative while I was there, because you can, you can, I guess they got some historical block that has people's names in it, they go.
Oh yeah.
They can screenshot.
He didn't stay, so I'm not sure he had a better presentation.
We're just waiting for one more in-person council of our group to move on again.
Didn't see, you should have said he was coming, right?
He said so, but that was after you said, so now, and then you passed the playoffs, it's going to be virtual. It can't. Naima's on her way.
So, I guess we have to wait until Naima, when Naima comes, before we can start official business. So please just bear with us out there and, virtual, until that happens. We put them back on, we can't put them back on the road, right?
Does he want those?
Yeah.
Once the sergeant, right, once the sergeant record, then we just have to, yeah.
Should we tell jokes?
I don't have a single year looking my mouth water, so, that would be all, yeah. That reminds me every day that I'm not coming. Thank you, let him know, will he?
Well, look at the case I hung, because I understand, you always have nightclub for you.
Me?
Yeah. That's, that's what I heard.
A nightclub?
You were contemplating going on nightclub circuit, stand up.
Oh yeah. That sounds like me.
I'm, yeah, I think so.
It's going to put, I don't even have a reservation number.
You don't want to worry about that.
Yeah.
That will be the slurs. It would be, yeah, it's, it would be. It would be resolutions that adopt.
See. Are things going with the, procuring the new vehicle?
No, we just have to read this.
It's stated here?
So, so I mean, you could write this, so you could, and yeah, so you would, I mean, I would. Yeah, but you don't have to read it aloud, it's part of the official.
You don't allow it, which is, well, it's like best value or anything like that, I don't know. Nobody get on, time just keeps on going by and by. Something now, it was backed up to me today about it. Okay, and, you know, he, he's contemplated, just call, call, and say how to use this.
That's weird, why would everybody get on it?
This is a used piece of equipment, and then their time, we fill it all out, everything submitted. And then, there's somebody walking in, placing videos, and said, I've got that. Yeah, they're there, it's the first one, show the money. It's a.
What about that, the air conditioning? Any progress on that?
We have the bridge of access and, we're already pressed, we have to have the head.
And so these are, these are things the city haven't seen. Saturday night, the fire you're talking about down in Wilbur. We brought one in and we brought it up into the golf course and you park in there and recycle all of that and we use their water. Instead of hitting the hydrant, the fire wasn't going anyplace. The really concern was there was boundaries, boundaries. The perimeter fire was railroad tracks. You had West O'Reilly Street, you had the golf course. So they only had one spot to move and if we went up, down, to Whit Street, you know, running to us up there. So we pretty much had us surrounded. And it was now just, let's not tax, the system is already taxed. And use tanker water to put it out. So that's what we, that's how we, that's how we operate Saturday night.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you coming in and updating the city. You know, the burn, burn ban and what you guys were doing in case of fire. All right, thank you.
And as long as we appreciate you with your audio.
Thank you. We appreciate the support you give us. Do it without the equipment, man. You go with that.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the CAC scoping plan. And that's gonna be presented.
Cal.
Cal.
Yes.
Cal's gonna present that. Come on up, Cal.
Thanks so much.
So it's a C A C. Climate Action.
Uh, so the Climate Action Council.
Council, okay.
Yeah, so I brought some paper copies of the letter from Climate Smart Kingston. My condition is this one.
This is what's on the agenda.
This is what's on the agenda.
Just looking at what's on the agenda.
Yeah, I didn't know. They have something.
No problem.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that they knew we weren't getting something good out of it.
Yeah, so you should have gotten a lengthy thing.
It's a little old fashioned, I appreciate it.
We do not know anything.
Yes, I did.
So I've attached a copy of the letter and as well as a copy of the draft resolution. So this is just sort of a request from Climate Smart to consider passing a resolution in support of the Climate Action Council's scoping process. So what that means, I don't want to assume anybody does or doesn't know anything. So if I need too detailed, let me know and I can speed along. But in 2019, New York State passed the most aggressive climate law in the country. And it set a bunch of targets for when we're gonna be using what amounts of renewable energy and, you know, phasing out the use of fossil fuels and taking other measures to protect the environment. And a group called the Climate Action Council had the task of taking a look at where we are now and where we need to get by such and such years and figuring out how we're gonna do that. And that has been the scoping process, figuring out, okay, we got this plan, how do we get there? And so public comment on the plan was open through July. And so up until that point, it was possible for the public to go to comment periods and officially weigh in and say, I, I support the plan or I, I want this change in the plan. And, you know, give their feedback that way. Since that comment period is closed, basically the only way to continue to show support now would be for municipalities to be passing resolutions like this, just to say, we support the process as it's going and we want to make it known that you have, you know, you have our support as a municipality in, in making these, these changes that I outlined. I can make my, my. So the model resolution itself, a couple of the things that it does is it brings attention to the urgency of the climate crisis, including findings from the most recent international consensus on, on climate change. It affirms the importance of the New York, of New York's Climate Act. It accurately describes and affirms key recommendations of the draft scoping plan. It highlights some of the non-climate benefits of actions for public health, jobs, natural resource protection, agricultural land preservation and local economic investments. It urges support for measures important to rural and under-resourced communities, including increased financial incentives for building at home improvements and state investments in rural public transportation. And it calls for a statewide public education information campaign to the benefits of a clean energy economy and climate-friendly choices. Some of the municipalities that have already passed resolutions of support as of the end of July, Ulster County, Tompkins County and Albany County that did a proclamation instead of a resolution. I'm not super clear on the difference. Some towns are Marble Town, New Paltz, Austin, Ryanbeck and Red Hook. Villages are Hastings, on Hudson, New Paltz and Ryanbeck. The City of Albany and also the Westchester Municipal Officials Association passed resolutions of support. Um, just the last thing is like, what are some reasons to pass the resolution? It shows that local governments are critical partners in addressing climate change. So the views in support of Kingston carry an important weight with state decision makers. Hearing from the diversity of New York municipalities is important. So large and small, urban, suburban, rural, all different levels of communities weighing in is really important. The finalized scoping plan will not be finished until the end of the year. And so even though public comment is closed, you can, we can still show support while they're finalizing the, the steps. The resolution can also be an important public education tool. And it helps to counter misinformation from a couple of really well-funded fossil fuel industry campaigns that have been attacking the state. And I have information on those, people want them. I'm open to whatever questions I can try to answer. If I can't answer something, I'd be happy to try to take you more information.
Any questions? All women, Randy Scott Childers.
So I just want to make sure I understand a couple of things. So when it's, when it talks about supporting prohibiting and expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure, that means things, large projects like pipelines and refineries and things like that, not necessarily an individual opening up a gas station? Or does it include something at that level too?
So at a certain point in the scoping plan, it will involve a phase out of fossil fuel transportation. But that's pretty far down the road. So it's not like immediate, but those things are included in how do we get to these targets? It would eventually include things like that.
And I mean, for Kingston proper, this is all good. We're talking about rural transportation. I do, I'm happy to see the part of trying to make electric vehicles affordable. But it seems like when you're talking about rural transportation, that has to be even more important, finding ways to help folks out there because we're not gonna be able to expand in Ulster County. I think we're not gonna significantly expand the public transportation system to the point where you could really move people around, you know, in those places.
Yeah, I absolutely agree.
But yeah, and so I'm glad to see too that there would be support for anything that can be done to help lower income people to, to be able to afford these vehicles that are all electric. I think it's absolutely vital because at this point, you know, it's, it's frustrating that EVs tend to be for people who have needs. Because then they're also, you say, money without the, 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 you know, rising falling fuel prices. So, but thank you for this.
Absolutely, yeah. There, one of the focuses of the Climate Action Council is to devote a certain amount of resources to what they're referring to as disadvantaged communities. So that's places with fewer resources or places that are already overburdened with, for example, a fossil fuel plant, things like that. And as is mentioned in the letter, Kingston is actually considered a higher priority for some of those disadvantaged community resources because of just the way that they sort of, sort of audited the state to see where, where the heat was. Kingston's one of the places to find that heat. But as far as things like making electric vehicles affordable for lower income people, that is one of the priorities of the transportation section. Because right now they are already affordable to people who have needs. And so making that difference is going to be the key.
Good, thank you. Chadmore. Cal, so my question is, what has been already in the pipeline about disadvantaged communities? And as Randy was stating, and, you know, the surrounding communities outside the city of Kingston regard to affordability of transportation? Has there already been a discussion about what could be done?
Uh, yes, so I don't know if I have specifics in my brain that I can give you, but I can absolutely get you that information if it would be helpful. I can tell you that the criteria themselves of how do we decide what is and isn't a disadvantaged community for the purposes of, of the law was open to public comment until the beginning of August. So even that is only kind of recently finalized, like what, like how they even decide, where to put these extra resources. What the specifics are, I don't actually have off the top of my head for that. But I can get that information.
Okay, thank you. All the women, Barbara Hill.
Hi, Barbara Hill here. Thanks for your presentation. I read over the materials and it looks great. So needed, I mean. I, I want to bring up that Ulster County, I went to some sort of forum where it was gonna, and I think the county was going for a grant for electronic vehicles. And it would sort of work like, I thought, like Uber in a sense. Or like people could call and it was gonna be really streamlined in terms of people, you know, rural in the city, we're gonna be able to have more access to this transportation. So, you know, I'm looking forward to there being other grant opportunities to achieve some of the goals that are in this resolution. So that, I guess, isn't a question. But sort of, I'd like to know more about, I know the county passed this, which is great. So there's, I think what they were working on is really akin to what's, what we're talking about. I've been very confused. Central Hudson trenching all over the city for new gas lines. And then gas prices are rising. And, you know, I always wonder if we were another community, would, you know, when could we have stopped, you know, the trenching? Or, uh, so how did that happen that, because I know other parts of the city have been trenched? And I guess it's just equipment that has been old and they just need to invest in new piping? So it's, it's just intense to see what costs are of that happening. So I guess, I don't know what to say about it. Does anybody, I can talk offline to people about that, but is that happening in other communities too? Do you know?
That, that the gas utilities are replacing infrastructure?
Yeah, and, and investing in something that isn't, isn't a renewable resource, although.
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the questions. Is, are these expensive investments at risk of becoming stranded assets if we're phasing out the use of gas for heating and for, you know, the various things that it's currently used for? And the answer is yes, they are in danger of being stranded assets. And so, but at the same time, if you've got infrastructure that needs to be replaced, you not replace it, is that a safety hazard? So I can sort of see the, the predicament. But I don't have a lot of information about that in particular.
Actually, I could jump in a little bit more just to, so, you know, I don't know the exact reason. But I mean, the, the central Hudson project you're talking about, where they're replacing the lines, where you, or Tony, you might know the, here, I mean, it was a 10-year rate plan.
Well, and it's mandated by the state.
It's mandated by the state. So we didn't really have an option to, to do it.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Yeah, we're, we're closer to the end of it than we are at the beginning. But it is, it's been something that's, you know, we didn't have a choice to do it. The state told us, you know, and it's, you know, we're, we're getting close to the end of it.
Any other questions?
Um, have there been any communities that you brought this forward to that voted against it? Because it looks like a very esteemed group of counties, municipalities. And I guess you're doing this in advance of the scoping that's coming out at the end of the year? And are you trying, you know, that, I was just curious about how that's, how you're... I'm done.
Right, okay, so the, there were two, as far as I know, two counties during the public comment period passed resolutions using talking points from these couple of fossil fuel misinformation campaigns that are actually points from the scoping plan in oppositions of the scoping plan. And that's part of why it's important for municipalities to support the process to say so. Because we have the risk of the council backing down from making some of these really important decisions that protect, you know, the kids who live in New York State now, who will grow up in a world that may or may not be a habitable temperature. You know, like, we're talking about pretty stark future possibilities. And having those choices be dictated by the American Petroleum Institute is pretty dire. And so the talking points from these couple of resolutions against the scoping plan were so clearly taken directly from this misinformation, these misinformation campaigns, that it felt really important to like get the exact facts from the plan as it's outlined and put those into communities that can say, we support these things that are actually in the plan. So that was part of the end of the test. I don't know if that addresses your, your question.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
I do have materials on the misinformation campaigns. If anyone wants an incredibly deep dive, that a couple of folks did. It's a little bit of a, it's a mini packet, but please peruse that your letter if you like, I brought two.
So any other questions? Not, can I have a motion for discussion? Randy Scott Childers, a second? Barbara Hill, all favor? Is there any more discussion?
You have to, you have to read the committee report.
I have to read it?
Not the whole resolution, just the committee report.
So the committee report's gonna read resolution in support for New York State Climate Action Council's scoping plan. And I have been here, see attached, so I'm gonna put my copy, see attached.
Not even the full.
Anybody, motion in favor of this, all right?
Yeah, you just all in favor?
All in favor? Anybody votes? All right. Everybody's for it? And Randy's in for, Randy, you do what you need. And can I sign for Barbara and Michelle? I'm gonna be signing your names. And not either way, the way that you sign it, I'm making fancy.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Cal.
Do you need me to answer me?
No, no.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. It's nice having you coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I mean, you guys are welcome to stand.
Yeah, you're welcome to stand. Okay, so the next item on new business is the crosswalk flag pilot. And this has been a while coming. And we've had some heated discussion on Facebook in regard to this. And so this survey's come to an end of the month, I believe it was in, in the end of August or the end of July. And we're also, and when this idea was brought upon, it was determined that the committee would discuss the future of the area, idea of receiving constituent comments. And we've gotten that information. You know, you could go online and see it yourself. You know, I brought this resolution up, so I'll put my name out there that I'm the one that spearheaded this and read a lot of misinformation on Facebook about, you know, why this is happening and stuff. And the reason that I brought this up is because a lot of constituents, especially in uptown, are concerned about being able to cross at certain intersections and preferably North Front Street in front of Front Street Tavern. And what is that church up there? The one across the street from Old Dutch Church? St. Joseph's, with pedestrians crossing there. And so, and that was one of the concern was that I was trying to be proactive. And, and, and now and now, you know, hopefully we could get something in there that constituents and people who are visiting and especially uptown Kingston would be able to feel safe walking across these intersections. And by visiting down in St. Augustine, Florida, I had seen this in, in firsthand, this flag and pilot program across major intersection, A1, if you've ever been to Florida, A1 basically runs all the length of Florida. And so it's a busy highway. And when I was down there visiting, I seen, you know, residents and tourists using this and how the cars would stop and that the people walk across. So that being said, that is why I brought this up. That it seems like, and the majority of the community or the people who reply don't feel that this is a need in, in that particular area of upside, uptown Kingston. And so that being said, and I'm gonna put it out there.
Okay, I need to just brush.
Yeah, and that, you know, I'm gonna be making up a committee report that, you know, I listened to the constituents, I listened to what people were commenting on there. And it feels at this time that it isn't, to them is not a need for this flag pilot program. And so I'm gonna be, you know, voting in favor of removing this, and these, these signs at this time. But that's this one vote, so anybody else have anything to say?
So two things. You will, you will actually need a committee report.
Okay, okay.
The committee decides that you don't want this, you could just call DPW.
Okay.
Just take it down, because it's not legislative.
Okay.
So that's kind of more, more my technical thing. But I also wanted to thank you for bringing this up because like I think this was actually a really good process and this is how we should be operating. I mean, you heard a problem, and I hear a problem at that intersection as well because when cars approach, you can't necessarily see people there. So you saw a problem, you heard a problem with these two constituents, you came up with an innovative solution, but said, maybe it will work or maybe it won't work. Let's attempt it. And then you said, but let's figure it out by listening to the community. You know, and everybody, you know, last year's public safety, you know, gets the credit for that too. You know, you tried it. And I guess the next step is if you're gonna listen to the committee, you can say, no, we're not gonna listen. But maybe I'll take some of this back. But I think like that is the correct process of how we should go about it. Saw a problem, came up with a solution, asked the community if that solution was something that they wanted. You have their feedback and we got a lot of feedback, which is awesome. Because a lot of things we do, we don't get a lot of feedback. And so I think I just want to say thank you. And I know that there was a lot of nasty stuff on Facebook, it would be really unnecessary. And so I just wanted to probably thank you.
And I appreciate it, I appreciate it. And again, as you mentioned, Madam President, that's the way politics should work. And that we're not just forcing something on and saying that's gonna be the way. And we put it out there, we listen. And more, more, there was positives as well, that there was more negatives, and they're taking, removing. And so unless somebody else throws it, I'm gonna keep it up. And I'll be contacting DPW to remove it.
Maybe the problem was just the flag was too small. Take it like three by five?
I know it's been a lot of things in, in, in trial up there with, you know, with the, the green signs in the middle of roads about, you know, just watching for pedestrians and crossing and that. But that didn't work, seeing that that was being, you know, they were taken and removed, et cetera, et cetera. And so, and, you know, I just thought this would be an alternate, alternate solution. But like I said, I, I listened to the constituents and the majority don't think that it's needed there at the time. So that's it.
Okay. I'm aware of that, you know, being utilized.
Yeah, I mean, I see them sometimes, but not, you know, not on an everyday basis.
Well, I'm sure you can do this, I'm not saying I don't know.
Correct.
New Paltz also was trying and I heard that was part of actually the comments, so.
Barbara Hill and Michelle Hurst, Barbara?
Okay, quick. I, I think the problem up there is traffic calming. I mean, people are rolling through that main wall in North Front. They're just rolling through there. So I think in an overall educational process we're in, ongoing, I think, for the city. And hopefully lowering the speed limit, we hope. I hope it just calms down up there over time and people getting used to the people and the pedestrian right-of-way crosswalks. And thank you, you know, this is a PDSA, Plan Do Study Act. Those are those cycles of improvement. So thanks, Tony, for, you know, giving it a shot with this one. Thank you.
All women, Michelle Hurst.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. I just wanted to say thank you for putting this forward last year. You know, we voted this in last year and I, I'm good with recalling it. I just, I have like a concern regarding, you know, the community touching things in light of, you know, current health issues going on. So I'm in favor of withdrawing it. I think we have, you know, the flash and crosswalk situations now that are being installed around the city. So I think there's increased awareness, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, so I just have to call and take the P W. All right, I will do that, I'll put that on my notes here. Now, following that, we're into old business. And the first item on the old business is Resolution 167 of 2022. I guess it was a, not a, something should be added. So we're just gonna be, we've already passed this resolution and that neither they come back to re-add something. So I'm just gonna read this committee report and then Resolution 167 of 2022, to add stop signs at the intersection of Rinton Street and Hensdale Street in the City of Kingston. And passed out, I believe, last month back. And they should have had stop signs and added it. So motion discussed? Did we have to do that? Right, that's what?
I'm here to read, adopt that resolution.
All right. All in favor?
Do you get a second?
Oh, second, I'm sorry. All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's pass this. Okay, pass this around. Again, ladies, I will be signing for you. And then the last item on the agenda on the old business is the Board of Assessment Review vacancy. And the Board of Assessment Review will have a vacancy on September 30th, so the end of next month. And one board who members stepping down after many years of service. And so in accordance with Chapter 8 of the City of Kingston Council Assessment Review Board, the Climate Council will need to fill this board. All right, will have, fill this board term that will run from October 1st of 2020 through September 30th of 2027, 27th. So does anybody have any, any names that they would like to bring to the board or to the committee, I should say?
No, I don't think so.
So what we need, I, I have my back. I am the last person to serve on the board. The last we do.
They're here for progress.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we all can come, you know, try to reach out to our constituents or not even constituents, people who are, you know, express interest in helping serve, you know, Kingston in any way possible. And maybe, you know, some of the people that were on this, that applied for the Ring Control Board or the...
Ring God.
What?
Ring God.
The Ring High Line Board, but also the...
The Mar-a-Lago.
Mar-a-Lago Review. See if we could reach out to some of those people, if you still have the names, and see if they want to serve the City of Kingston in another capacity. And by serving on this Board of Assessment Review, I know it doesn't mean a lot and, and that it is, you know, it is an important board. And so, you know, that is why, you know, if you could come up with some names and you could either send that names to me or to Andrea so that we can, you know, then pass them on and maybe to vote for in next September's Public Safety, it'd be greatly appreciated. Andrea?
Dan, can I ask you a question?
Oh, Stan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you for being here, it's Andrea. I just could, I don't know, maybe to help people start thinking about names. Do you have any, like, what type of person would be a good fit? Like, what characteristics? So if I'm like, oh, somebody who's really interested in numbers or someone who's really interested in poodles would really make a, you know, for...
Sure. Yeah, that, that's a good question. So just for, just for a, a point sake. So, just for, just for a point's sake, this, this board does include training. So, the Ulster County Real Property Tax Service will have a training night. They do that annually, so this person would have training. And also, this is what they call a quasi-judicial board. So, this is a board that meets in public, just like a hearing or a court, a court hearing. And then, they deliberate in private. So, this is someone who is able to, someone who is, maybe have some sort of concept of that where it is a legal board, someone who's able to read a manual and be able to follow those, those workflows, those AVNCs as to what is allowed and what isn't allowed. They may be someone who does have some, some real estate experience, but is not necessarily a board where they're going to be reappraising property. They're going to be accepting evidence and making a decision as to whether that evidence is acceptable or not. So, it is a judicial board and I think that's probably the most important item is to recognize that.
All right, thank you, Dan. So, again, we can just come up with, you know, some names or a name and between now and before the next month's Public Safety Committee. And so, we can load on that, have it greatly appreciated.
And Tony, one last thing, if anyone does have someone and that person is up in the air and they would like to talk to me about that, that you can send them my way, I'd be happy to speak with them.
All right, thank you. So, again, and I don't think anybody had any names today, but again, we come up with some names, I would greatly appreciate it because this has to be filled, right? Thank you, any other things that we need to discuss? If not, and I hear any discussion, we'll close in this Public Safety General Government Committee meeting at 7:21. Remember, we have a special Common Council meeting.
Yes, in 10 minutes. So, log out of this one, Michelle and Barbara, and then I'll, we'll see you in Cambridge.
Thank you.